It is 10:00 AM and we begin this public hearing. And Ms. Brown, if you would read that one A, please.
Public hearing regarding the annexation of an approximate 3.669 acre tract of land located within the J.D. Leebles survey number 1862, abstract number 1435, Kerr County, Texas, being known as 884 Farm to Market Road 783 Harper Highway. Proposed zoning for the tract is the Gateway Zoning District.
All right. Mr. Paxton.
Morning, Mayor and Council. I think I have that PowerPoint up on the screen there. Just want to run through a quick timeline for all four annexations. The different dates, the petitions, each of these are petition annexations. Petition has been read and accepted. Last week, on the 11th, we had the first public hearing. Today, we're having a second public hearing. Moving forward, October 9th, we'll have the first reading of the ordinance and a public hearing for the zoning request. October 23rd will be the second reading of the annexation ordinance and the zoning request. Item 1A is 884 Harper Road or Farm to Market 783. This is petition request for this land. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Do we have anybody speak to this? Okay. Thank you. If you would read item 1B.
Go ahead and close the public hearing.
Yeah. Close the public hearing at 10:0150 and open next at 10:0154.
Public hearing regarding the annexation of an approximate 0.885 acre tract of land being located within both the Jesus Hernandez survey number 548, abstract number 189, and the M.K. and T.E. Railway Company survey number 1862, abstract number 1435, Kerr County, Texas, being known as 874 Farm to Market Road 783 Harper Highway. Proposed zoning for the tract is the Gateway Zoning District.
Ms. Brown said this is 874 Harper Road, also a petitioned annexation. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Anybody ask?
All right. Public hearing closed at 10:0252 and next public hearing open at 10:0252.
Public hearing regarding the annexation of an approximate 5.335 acre tract of land located within the William Watts survey number 65, abstract number 364, Kerr County, Texas, being generally located adjacent to State Highway 173 and part of the Comanche Trace Residential subdivision. Said tract also known as Comanche Trace Section 15. Proposed zoning for the tract is Plan Development Zoning District to authorize single-family residential.
Says Phase 15 of Comanche Trace. Plan district development does include the residential setbacks for this property. And I once again, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions or response on this item?
Can I just ask a question?
Or do I wait till after we close?
We open, yeah, we close it, okay? Public hearing is closed at 10:0404. Okay, Mr. Ridge.
Just a curiosity question. We're bringing this in as a plan development and it's going to be residential. And then a later one, you know, we talk about, what's the reasoning behind doing plan development instead of one of our residential zones?
Be a better question for the applicant, but I think the intent was, one side of the street is garden, or they're garden lots is what they call them, reduced setbacks. The other side of the street is their larger lots. So with that combination, doing the planned district development, they came in with one request instead of a split request.
So it would have been two different residential zones to do it?
Correct.
And, right, so for clarifying, the plan development actually gives more control of the zoning to the city also, right? I mean, ultimately, right?
Right.
Okay. So anyways, that's all. Just curious.
But it's something that we'll definitely want to look at when we rewrite the zoning code because we don't have a lot of flexibility to do these kinds of things the way it is written now.
Okay.
All right. Next item, if you would read it for us. Yeah, at 10:0517.
Public hearing regarding the annexation of an approximate 59.09 acre tract of land located within both the Joseph S. Anderson survey number 141, abstract number 2, and the J.S. Sater survey number 142, abstract number 290, Kerr County, Texas, being generally located adjacent to State Spur 98 Thompson Drive, addressed as 1515 Nap Road South. Proposed zoning for the tract is 7W Zoning District.
As we talked about during the last public hearing, the applicant was working on a new set of meets and bounds to bring in, or to exclude, the strip of land adjacent to the adjacent property owners. That has come in roughly a third of an acre less, so just a little over 58 acres. We'll have that language updated in the ordinance on October 9th for the first reading. But we do have those new meets and bounds on in hand.
Okay. Anyone like to speak to this matter?
My name is J.E. Johnson, 1524 Nap Road. When all this process started, there was some opportunities for some disagreements on property lines, zoning areas, and so on. Even though I have been a proponent and opponent of the developer's activities, I'm going to have to say that the developer has stepped forward. The modification of this annexation line, yesterday afternoon, I received documents that showed that that is being addressed and it is being done. There are a few other issues we have to work through, not necessarily the developer's issues, but issues that we have and our adjacent property owner have on exactly how we're going to deal with our private road so that the county nap road can be properly abolished so that we still have rights of ingress and egress to get to the state road. So, I'm one of the first people to throw rocks, but I also have to be the same person to go pick those rocks up when I threw them incorrectly. Now, I still have a box of rocks, but, but, right now, thank you.
All right. And thank you for coming, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to explain the shirt, though.
$2.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, okay. All right. Since this is a workshop, we normally don't take any public comment generally, but we do in this instance. Anything else in response?
Close it?
I have a question, but...
Okay, let me, out of public hearing at 10:0831.
This might be for staff, but when we annex nap road, does the county have to convey their portion of nap road to the city?
No.
How do you keep that on record?
We, there's a provision in state law that talks about per cities annex roads, they control the roads. And so, remember, this isn't an ownership issue by the county, as far as I know. And so, by extension of our city limits, it takes control of the road. And I think that, as far as I know, the county will be happy for us to do that and maintain it to the extent that it continues to exist or moves.
Do we automatically take, like, we annex it, it's automatically ours, so we don't have to officially release?
That's right.
All right.
Thank you.
Say, complete it, okay? Move to the next point, and I want just a minute of a break. Yeah, Ms. Brown, read the agenda item into the record.
City Council Ethics Policy and Rules and Procedures for Meetings.
All right, okay. Hayes, will you introduce first item?
Well, I think it, you know, this is a workshop. It's really, however you all want to consider it, the rules are before you, the ethics policy is before you. I think the city manager at some point has informed you all that we're prepared to go rule by rule or section by section, however you all want to do it, it's really up to you all.
All right.
Did you get some folks to ask for items to go through? Oh, yes, I did, and I'm not sure I got those off the printer, but I can run and get those.
I can, I can find them. One of mine I can remember, the second one I...
I didn't, I only, yeah, I know I have...
Sure, I can remember.
Information from a couple of council members.
So we're working off a list that people have created?
Well, it's gonna be lengthy.
Maybe to start it?
Yeah, just something to begin.
Delaine, did you find those?
2.2 was the first one regarding special meetings. And I actually thought...
Are we in procedural rules?
Yes, sorry. I just thought that what we were allowed to do last night, announcing that to be an informal gathering, was very productive. So, that was my question all along about special meetings, or if you want to call them town hall meetings, is, given the notice, we could all attend and then we can be part of the listening, part of the input.
That's not what this, that's not what last night was or what this talks about. This is a, this is talking about special meetings that are called under emergence.
Somewhat, like a workshop.
No, because these aren't special. It's more like something where we've got to get something done by a deadline, and so they call a special meeting.
Like that funding for the Chris Herring or something like that. Could have been a special meeting.
Right.
Okay, you're right.
So that's what this is talking about.
Perhaps this, that should be in another section. I agree.
I have a question on this one.
Still want to talk about it.
Hey, is, how do we get the majority of council to call a special meeting? Does a council member call the other council members, or do we talk to staff, or?
Right. So, so the special meetings, you know, that, that's a, you know, however you all want to define that, but there's that charter provision here, shall be called upon the city secretary of affairs, trust by the mayor, or majority of the members of council. I mean, I'll be honest, this is from the charter, you all can't take any action outside of a council meeting, which isn't to say this isn't common in city charters, but I don't, I don't like it because it's basically three of you all getting together and deciding to call a special meeting.
With that, I've seen, hang on, let me just finish this up.
I've seen cities go in and amend their charters to, to allow for less than a majority of council to do it, whether that's two members or up to, you know, you're, you know, let's say, let's say you've got a seven-member body, up to three members, but that's something we probably ought to look at when we go through the charter review.
That was, I was uncomfortable with that, with that Chris Herring. I would have wanted to do that, but I called the mayor and tried to do it that way.
Right. And those things are going to happen again, so I just, it's good to know how to proceed so we don't lose time or an opportunity. We don't want to make hasty decisions either, so.
Is actually deciding to have a meeting considered action?
Could be, yeah. You're deciding to have a meeting, you know. I've seen this come up in other cities where councils have been challenged on it, not that it's resulted in litigation or some sort of criminal activity, but, or criminal investigation, but it could be an issue.
So just to kind of make sure this one is kind of cleaned up a bit, y'all could amend it, not today, but I guess you could, but later, is that if somebody wants to call a special meeting, contact the mayor and contact me, but not each other. And that way, in a three of you do, then that's for sure a majority, it's on, it's called.
Right, so kind of on that, if it was just, just take out consensus of council and leave it as the, give it the mayor's sort of prerogative, if you will, and, or I'm asking you to consider this, and say, say I wanted to get a special meeting called, it's, it becomes my job, I mean, it's a pretty extreme thing to call a special meeting, right? So it would be my job then to convince the mayor to actually set it up. So, and if I can't, then so be it, can't do the special meeting. So we basically give the authority to a city manager or the mayor, and if the mayor actually asks the city manager to do it, then it gets done. And if the city manager decides to do it, then it gets done, kind of like that, you see what I'm saying?
Or it's on the agenda as an action item because we don't, we don't have a time.
Right. Does that make sense? I mean, this would be, so the part, basically, we're, the suggestion would be to take out the part that says "or consensus," just leave it as a mayor decision.
Or a majority of members of council.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not even sure where we were.
Okay.
2.2.
Okay, we're still on 2.2, okay, yeah.
Councilmember Verdi, what we, what I would do is maybe just capture that charter provision, but do something, I mean, we can't amend the charter through this action, of course, but I understand what you're saying and I can prepare something for you all to consider that.
Yeah, so the charter was, is more broad than this in this sense, and that's okay, because, yeah.
And you all have a right to do that.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna play the other side of this a bit. You know, you're putting a lot of trust there, whether a council member can convince the mayor to proceed, but if the mayor is clearly out of line or not seeing something that needs to be seen, can three members of the council approach the city manager?
Not really, because that's like polling votes, but what they can do is take action in, like he was suggesting, you get an agenda item, yeah, put it on agenda and do it formally that way.
Okay.
So that council member can request it be on the agenda?
Correct.
Yeah, and then...
At a regular meeting? Yeah.
Okay.
And in my time here, I've never really seen this to be an issue. And I think frankly, it comes up at the end of meetings, you know, can we do a special meeting in the next few weeks or next week and then call it aside, you know?
Okay.
Well, where is it in procedures where the town hall meeting concept would come? If you want to...
I don't think it is. I think it would be more posting a meeting that you would be attending if there's a quorum. We don't have that in there, I looked for it.
No.
And that might be something we need to discuss. I feel that any council member should have the ability to post a meeting if they feel that there'd be a quorum present.
Yeah, and I'd like to clarify, we're actually, when we talk about posting, whether it's on this topic or something else, posting something isn't making it a meeting. We're posting things as an announcement that a possible quorum will be in attendance at some place. It doesn't have to be, be an event.
Right.
Where possibly things might be heard that are putting us in jeopardy of the Open Meetings Act. So that's the only reason you're posting it, it's just an announcement of a quorum. So whether someone has a meeting or has an event, we don't have the authority to control events happening or not happening.
Right.
So anyways...
Sometimes you do, though, and I guess that's what I was interested in, is the ones we can plan and we can control and make sure we do that wisely, I guess, is the best way to put it.
So the difference of there being a meeting and then a possibility of the council quorum being there versus an individual council member calling a meeting?
Right. And I mean, I can see times where we all might have an idea we want to bring to the public and I want to make sure I plan it and enough time to get all the input. So that was, I was looking for that clarification and I didn't exactly get it, so that's why I had it on there.
Okay, but what about if you're going to address an issue before the council? You don't know whether there's going to be a quorum there or not, but you're going to address an issue that is before the council. Should that be posted?
I've got a meeting.
No, you only have to post it if there's going to be a quorum hearing that discussion. And so, if there is or isn't a quorum, just means the thing gets posted, but you still can't, we cannot control the event. All we can control is, the Open Meetings Act isn't in order to control us, it's actually in order to put open discussion among council members in the public sphere. That's all that's about. It's not to handcuff us to not talk about things, it's to just make it so it can be talked about and everybody hear it. So as far as whether the topic of a, I mean, this is all about town hall, so we'll just talk about it, right? So if, if the topic at the town hall is something that is going to be in front of council, which I think is what you're talking about, you still can't prevent that event from happening? All you can do is make it so that if a quorum will be present, that we post it.
Well, I think that's what we said, that's what we wanted, that's, that's what we were getting at, is that...
And so, it's already there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a requirement of the OMA. If, if a quorum will be present, then you have to post it. That's all it is.
But can that not also be if a quorum could be present?
Absolutely, that's, that's really what you're supposed to do. If it's a possibility, you got, you have to post it. If you don't get it posted, then you then are restricting yourself from attending or attending and actually doing the discussion. You can attend, you just can't discuss, which is kind of silly.
And anybody on council can post a meeting?
Right, well, I think so. You could just call the city secretary, right?
In theory.
Yes.
Doesn't always work that way. It hasn't in the last few months, yes. So that would be something to clarify. It's not in here, but one thing to clarify is, there is, is there a right of refusal if you know that a quorum is going to be present in an event? Who can tell you, sorry, I can't post that? Should anybody be able to tell you that?
Was there a time restraint? I suppose.
What do you mean?
Well, it's happening tomorrow morning, or...
No, there, well, yeah, there is, but that's not a refusal to post, that's, that's actually just explanation, yeah, you can't, it won't be properly posted. But if you wished to, you knew that we were going to be at, you know, a party you were having at your house or something, and you wanted to get that posted, should anybody be able to tell you no? What's a reason not to post, I guess would be the one thing.
I don't know.
I don't think the refusal to post is the issue because...
Well, it's the issue I'm asking about.
Yeah, just like last night's meeting when it was obvious that there'd be a quorum there, got posted.
Right, and so...
Yeah, but someone requests to post it, who can tell you not to post it? I guess, is that the question, George?
Yeah, that is the question, and it is an issue, because it did happen.
Mark, Mike, sorry. Who, I mean, who can say, no, you can't post that?
Well, here, here's, here's an issue. I'm not sure, and you all need to decide this, but, you know, we go to, we try to go to great lengths to figure out, you know, kind of where you all are going to be and what you all have been invited to. And kind of, it's not written down, but if you all get invited to like a, let's say a political event, you know, for a fundraiser that's close to the public, we don't post that as a public meeting, even though you're going to have a quorum there. No, I, to the extent that I know about it, I'll maybe remind you all, hey, this is, you all have been invited to this, this event, it's, you know, it's a, it's not open to the public, we don't post that as a public meeting because we don't want it to, we don't want it to go out there, like, you're all going to have this meeting and, you know, you know, I'd like to get in, but then I can't. So there's, there's a balance there. So I, I mean, and, and that's kind of the constraint that we work through. So if, if, let's just say, Delaine is going to speak to the golf association, I think you all need to decide whether one of you can say, I'd like Delaine to post that as a, as a meeting.
I don't think it has to be her, but, yeah, I think if, if she goes, if she's doing that, I want to go to that event, and I figure, all right, there's already two, there might be one other one, hey, let's go ahead and post a meeting, and no one can tell me no, correct? And we're saying meeting, but it's not a meeting, just post the event. Post the event.
Well, but that's what you all have to work through. So if Delaine says, I don't want to gin this up in a certain extent to make it to be a public event or a public meeting, it's a meeting, we're posting a meeting notice, whether you call it or invite it or what. If she, I, I, you know, you all have to decide, does she have the right to say, I'm not, I don't want to post this as a meeting and frankly, and so, well, as a consequence of that, a quorum can't be there.
Okay, well, let's, okay, but let's, let's take your first example that you brought up, because I think it actually violates the OMA to do that.
It doesn't, it doesn't, by the way.
Hold on, hold on. Basically, let's assume we have a private club that's, that a gathering is going to occur, and because it's not, the private club isn't open to the public, we choose not to post that event because we don't want to, we don't want to put something out there that they can't attend, which is the example I think basically you just gave. All right, well, if this private club is going to have an event that is discussing, you know, a topic of discussion at that event might be city business, by us not posting it and having a quorum there, whether it's public or private, we are just violating it because we're having a, we're having a meeting, it's a walking quorum and discussion. So it's not about the pri, the privacy or the publicity of the club, it's that there is a quorum present in a location where someone might construe it as city business. So to save ourselves, what we're doing is announcing the existence of a quorum somewhere. That's all posting is.
No, but so you, you, you took my scenario and you added something to it. You, you took it, I took it to be a campaign function where someone is going to raise money and there wouldn't be any sort of real business, city business. That, that was my scenario. You've added it, in that case, I would say, don't, don't, you, you, a quorum cannot attend.
Okay, but if...
No, 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 just let me finish. If, so if that's it, because it's constrained and I can't, if I go to the front door and I can't get in, then I would say, and they're truly going to talk about city business, then yeah, frankly, I would say then you all would violate or could violate the act if a quorum got there.
But if it's a private club and nobody can verify it, you say all the time that we're supposed to protect ourselves, so whether or not they have the intent of speaking about city stuff, if it's a private club where a quorum is present, then someone outside is going to say they're doing backroom deals, even if they're not. So it gets back to the original thing. When would we ever, what's a valid reason not to announce the existence of a quorum? It doesn't, there, there doesn't seem to be a reason not to. What is ever the harm in announcing a possible quorum so that the public, I mean, it's the ultimate transparency. A quorum will exist. We put it all the time. No city business will be discussed and no action will be taken. That's, that's the deal, so nobody has the desire to go necessarily, but that's okay. So it gets back to, is there any reason for, one, to refuse it, and two, does anybody have the actual authority to refuse it? Do we want someone to have the authority to refuse that?
Let me just ask you a question. I'm just curious. Why didn't you post the June 11th meeting, event, whatever you want to call it?
Because I actually didn't think to, it wasn't because I wasn't going to invite somebody, it's because it, it didn't matter to me. I wasn't, the point wasn't to get counsel there, the point was to discuss something with the public.
Right.
And so, if someone wanted to attend, they could have, and they could have posted it. It was not, it doesn't matter whether they knew about it or not, because the, the truth is, whether I wanted to post it is not our question here. The question is, if someone wants to post an event, because they know, they're aware, I didn't expect a quorum there. If I was aware of a possible quorum, which is what occurred last night, then I would go and attempt to make the posting. If I expect that there's a possible quorum going to attend, which is what I did at the meeting that he was going to have, or town hall or discussion, whatever, I went and I was aware of a quorum, possible quorum going to exist, because I had been invited. So I tried to get that posted and was told no. So the question is, at what point does someone have the authority to say no to it? We all have the, we all have the authority to request it, so who has the authority to say no?
I didn't know there was a situation like that, so, I mean, I've never...
Well, that's what occurred. I mean, that's, that's what occurred at the meeting.
Well, I think it gets back to what Mike was talking about earlier. If it's, if it's perceived as a private event and somebody comes to the door that from the public because it's posted and they can't get in, and so it's just, it's just awkward, and I think we need to, you know, clarify when, and that's why it was not posted, that it was the desire, that it was a private function, it wasn't a public function.
It was a public function.
Well, it's, I don't know...
But that's the thing.
But that, that's what the intent was, okay? So, so that's the clarity that we need, is it always going to be posted and then therefore, you know, you just need to direct the staff to post it through me, or there are situations where we wouldn't post, that Mike described.
As moving forward, if we all want to be open and... As moving forward, if we all want to be open and transparent and everything would be posted, if there was a possibility of a quorum showing up.
Right, so if a possibility.
So we don't question it, we just post it.
If there's a possibility of a quorum being.
It's the easiest, it's simple, there's no question.
In in any case, whoever notifies saying there's a possible quorum gonna exist, we post it, right? And nobody says no to it.
All right, let me, we're gonna need to move on, but uh Mike, can you draft something for us in terms of um when a meeting is posted and when it is not? Gotta be plenty of verbiage out there to do that.
Well, again, it goes, Mark touched on it, it goes back to intent.
Well, but can't we just say?
I mean.
If everybody's agreement with. If a council member wants to post a meeting, there should be no one that can deny him, as long as there, as long as the timeline allows.
And I think if you think there's a chance that we might all show up.
And that's what we mean, that's the practice.
Okay.
Right, but it's not their responsibility to think those up all the time.
That does a good job with it.
Right, so if if we, if we become aware, it's not our responsibility it to tell everybody else, it's our responsibility. If I think I'm gonna be in a place where there's a quorum, then I can make sure that I'm allowed to be there by getting it posted. So that's basically all there is to that.
Okay, all right.
As they come up.
You can draw something up for us?
I don't know that he has to, does he?
Yeah, I I prefer that we do, just so it doesn't come into question again.
Yeah, I I think it would be better.
Yeah, good.
Put it in the procedural.
Yeah, y'all, we'll locate it right.
Now, I assume we decided to go section by section?
Well, I think there were some individuals that had their items that they wanted to pull with the top.
But I mean, I'm not overriding anybody else's, if you had, if anybody else.
I don't have anything before two point two.
Well, I had on procedures four point four, control of discussion, if you wanna skip everything and go to that, we can, if you don't, we don't, it's a deal.
Do you have something in between?
Actually, no, I don't.
Okay.
I have one in between on three point three, uh for uh, let's see, a person is limited to placing something on the agenda for one year period unless the item was postponed to a future meeting of a council member uh makes a written request for replacement, is one year too long for y'all, I think it is for me, I, maybe less than it's a six months. I think six months is a good time period for let someone cool off if it's actually an issue, but a year's kind of.
I actually have that tag too, so.
A year seems a little long to me.
I don't know why we had it for a year, but.
Is there an example?
Was there a reason for a year?
Nothing specific. I mean, I think it was just, like you said, probably, yes, someone cools off periods of y'all didn't get, you know.
Meeting after meeting, yeah, and which, we, historically, we don't really have that very often, do we? I mean, what do we, cuz this is.
No, we've had this, we've had these rules for a period of time too, I mean, it's come up before, we've told, we've had to tell people, well, you need to go to a council.
And and, right, so so that's actually the, um, whether it's six months or a year, that, this is only talking about a um, someone from the public. So a council member can.
Kind of sponsor it.
Yeah, and then get something in ahead of whatever time frame period we put, right? So uh I'd be okay with six months, but um.
I don't think it's a big deal, but I'd, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
Four point three.
Well, is there a downside going to six months?
I can't think of one.
If somebody abused it, there there would be, but.
I actually think there's a downside if it isn't here, cuz you might lose.
Yeah, yeah.
Momentum or interest or all the other things.
So we are saying, we are suggesting to go to six months instead of a year. Okay. Okay. All right, four four?
I, I guess I've had some concerns about our, some of our responses and questions taking a lengthy time to get out on the table. So I don't know if um, I know there's been some suggestions about a speaking limit time, like five minutes. I certainly could get, I think I could get any question or comment I have in in five minutes, I don't know, I'm gonna put that on the table and see what you think.
Well, this was also on my list, and I think that we need to limit ourselves, we, I think that out of respect for our time, we ask the public to limit their time. We've had one example, somebody just went on and on and on, and and putting in a time element for the public, I think it's been great. But I think we need to do the same thing and respect their time. Maybe we give ourselves another minute, maybe it's five, but I think we should do the same that we do for them. Ask, request the same thing of ourselves as we request of of the public.
I mean, we have it in there to keep it brief, why not be specific?
But I, yeah, I think it would help us if if we, uh, just because they're limited to four, so let's limit us to five if necessary.
Then we have to work on it to get it in.
I don't quite agree with that, cuz I think you're limiting discussion, and sometimes there's an issue that we may not see right now, but you can't, might not be able to do it in five minutes. Does that mean I get five minutes to speak and then it goes around, and then it comes back to me and I can't speak again?
Don't know, you'd have five minutes each time, as far as I'm concerned.
No, each time.
So here, here's, yeah, so, um, I'm sorry, I'm cutting you off.
No, and that just gets back to also the round robin thing, I don't agree with that. I think if I start questioning and ask questions to staff or anybody that's at the podium, I should be able to continue with that and finish as long as I'm not being repetitive or off topic, and if that takes ten minutes, it takes ten minutes. We're here to, how often do we get to, all five of us get around, we can't do this all the time, so the time we have together, we need to use it.
Well, I agree with that.
And it needs to be dialogue.
But it needs to be, we we need to be, we need to stay on course, we need to stay on topic and not run rabbit trails and.
Well, that's in there, that's in there, but we don't need to limit it to five minutes.
Well, but, but sometimes.
And the mayor, the mayor can make that.
We need to be limited, I mean, we just, we get, we can, talking too much.
I disagree with you.
All right, let's just say the big elephant in the room that we're talking about, everybody's trying to get at me, right? And and my, so, your version of it would be called ramblings, but let's just, let's just kinda historically go through what that has presented. One, if you put a time limit on the the stuff, then you get out of the dialogue and you get into statements that we make up there, and that's all we get. Because to put a time limit on me means I have to say all my piece in my five minutes in that one statement, so we aren't gonna dialogue.
No, it it could come around to you again.
Yeah, I know, but listen, you can't, you can't keep track of my time that way, so putting a time limit in there would be a problem. The other is, you guys basically do the round robin, and so thoughts are inefficiently displayed because I have a question that leads to another one that leads to another one. You, if I ask one and then you ask one, that that train of thought is gone, so that's one. The other is, you asked me the question before, how long should a public hearing take? Okay, well, and I answered as long as it takes to get the questions answered. The other night, we tried to have a discussion about the tours, it was a public hearing, but we also tried to have a discussion. The reason I had to do it the way I did it is because I asked one or two questions and basically somebody chimes in, I call the question, dialogue's over, we're gonna vote, okay, well, you went to that meet, that town hall last night, that's how long it takes to vet some things. You can't put a time limit on it, cuz some of them take longer than others, and last night you saw what it took, two hours of our time. And at the end of it, we didn't have any more questions, they were asked and answered. So why can't we just relax and realize that some nights, we're gonna have a long one, some nights, we won't? And this is the, this is the people's time, you know, when we dialogue, this is their questions being asked. Mr. Harrison stood up and said, I had questions, I got them answered. The better thing would have been to say, for him to say, I have questions, they were these, and kind of help the audience understand what those questions were and what the answers were, why don't we just do that?
You know, if we did, if we have an agenda with twelve items, and we each took, we each took uh five minutes, just the first five minutes in 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 the round robin, that'd be five hours of meeting. And that's a lot of time for a discussion, but it does even it out among council members better.
Is that the goal?
You know, it's interesting, George, one of the questions you had on tours, I was waiting for you to get to the question because I had a backup question to go with it, with the percentages, and you didn't get back to it because you got off on another area.
You know, you know why I did that, though, so I'm so.
I don't think it was anybody else's fault, I'm just saying.
Sure it is, cuz I keep asking questions and get told.
Well, but still, you should get back to your question then, cuz I was ready to hear.
Were you here Tuesday night? I was, the whole time I'm talking, are you done yet, let's let someone talk, well, if someone's let, lets someone talk, the very next thing, Ms. Eichner chimes in with, I call the question, I I understand that, but the point is, I come in knowing that at any moment, we did it when we passed the comprehensive plan, we didn't have dialogue, so if you ask a question and wait for the answer, he might take it away from that, and that to me is is why having the time lim, you guys are talking about a time limit on something you don't know what the topics are, why would you want, I mean, government takes time.
Well, go ahead.
Part of that, George, is some of us feel like we'll we'll never have a chance to talk because we don't want our people to have to be there till midnight or one o'clock. And if someone is is talking as as long as you talked, it, for the rest of us, if we all did that and and just continued on and on, it it's unmanageable. And we've, we've, we need to find, what I would suggest is, other ways to answer some of those long questions. I mean, you know, let's set it up for, let's have another, more workshops, let's have more town halls, let's do another venue in which that's what's going to go on, that 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 kind of give and take. Whereas here, when we get here, we're either starting something new, so we we just throw out a few things and then we set up another venue for more of it, or we're at the end of it, and those things should have all been answered and taken care of before we get there.
Okay, I've heard that said before, that's a, that's a very good point. So we can take care of them ourselves, but how does the public know what those questions and answers were that were taken care of? They don't, if we do it before the meeting, um which would make the meeting more efficient, but makes government less efficient, cuz now you're suggesting, instead of taking a few extra minutes in a, in one meeting, having more meetings. So to me, I don't, I have a problem, I signed up for council and was told two meetings a month, now you're gonna have a workshop every week to get the answers to the questions we needed to get done publicly.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the case, I think the other thing is, the public has a responsibility to ask questions. Uh, you know, they don't all have to be um answered by us, and 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 they have a responsibility to ask, okay, what, what about this? What, how do I understand this, what's the downside, and that kinda thing. But in terms of, you know, the the, our uh procedures say, the presiding officer shall request that all speakers keep comments brief and relevant to the question before the council, and then in four eight, each council member shall limit his or her remarks to a reasonable length. I think we ought to go to the five minute limit and see how we do with that, and and how we are able to do a meeting effectively, but also have enough time, uh and let's, let's see how that, let's see how that goes.
I strongly disagree with putting a time limit on it, I think you already have the authority to kinda ask or get someone to the point, but as far as putting a time limit on it, I think you're making a mistake.
And that's a good idea, I I agree with that, it's in there, but the person who's, who is speaking and speaking a long time doesn't want to be interrupted. So when, when they're not ready to relinquish the floor, and 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 Councilman Barudy was not, when he was not ready to relinquish the floor, he had not given all of his information out, which had been prepared ahead of time, which was fine, but when they're not ready, then that makes the mayor.
Was he being redundant and repetitive, or was it actually continuing on issue?
He didn't get to the question, actually.
No, and and so let's explain it, so if you, if you take away this um Gestapo tactic of cutting down the speech, then I wouldn't have done what I did, cuz to me, what I, when I've been on council before you guys were here and while you're here, and the way it normally works is you ask a question, get an answer. Because you guys have made it impossible to do that, I can't have a natural dialogue. So understanding that that was going to happen, the only choice I had was that. So to create the time limit doesn't actually do what we wanted, which is to get the information to the public. You say that they should, they should have a responsibility to come ask the questions, unless we tell them what's going on, they don't know what questions to ask. I had more people tell me last night, thank you for that, because these were the questions they wanted asked and answered. They don't get them asked and answered unless we tell them what's going on, so that's all we're trying to do.
Maybe you could start with a question and then go on with your explanation or your backup or your feelings about it.
That's the way I did it before you guys started doing the call the question.
All I know is I.
A round robin.
The quest, the question was called one time in the last meeting, and I didn't, I didn't follow it, you continue.
The question, the call the question has been used three times that I can recall, once at the uh the Calu Theater when we did the comp plan, we did one a couple of meetings ago, same thing, and you guys just called the question, by the way, when you called the question, you're actually, you're supposed to do a, call the question motion in a second, and then vote whether you call the question. We don't do that, cuz we don't follow those rules either, and then you tried it again the other night.
Well, I think um, what what, you know, what I would say to you is, I want us to answer the questions, I want us to get the information out, I want us to deal fairly with with the citizens who are before us and fairly with the issues that we have. I think that what we're talking about doing uh is is wise and prudent, let's try it, see how we do.
Okay, well, before we make that decision, I will just say that I think it's unwise and very imprudent, and I think it's irresponsible of us to call basically time limit um something that we don't know how long it takes to vet something, last night's the best example, it took us two hours, but we vetted it.
Well, there was a special issue.
But last night.
It was an issue that was on our council meeting the night before, or the the week before, and we didn't.
And it has been on prior to that, going into March.
Right, and we never addressed those questions that are still there, obviously, they still had the questions.
But the people who asked those questions last night weren't at the the council meeting to ask them at that time.
Because we haven't told them what we're doing.
But that's why, last night's meeting was fine, that was perfect.
Well, I thank you for that appre, you know, for that, you know, affirmation.
And that's what I'm saying is, that we do, we do more of that, rather than somebody just going on for fifteen minutes here that, and you don't have all the people that are really testing.
Come on, you know why I do that.
Okay, hey, let me tell you, we could go on and on on this, what else do you have in the ethics?
Well, I have one more thing to say, if I, what happens if we go over five minutes? Are you gonna stop me?
Right. But, but.
If we're going to respect each other, we need to.
I think that's disrespectful to say, I'm sorry, you gotta push this in five minutes when I have a lot of things to discuss.
Realistically speaking, how many times do you think you would do that, or even have, I don't think you have.
No, but there's also always a possibility, and for us to limit us to that, that's ridiculous.
But we limit our, the public.
But we can also say, okay, you're not done in your four minutes, continue, please.
I don't, I don't, I tell you, I guarantee you, I do not wanna be disrespectful up there uh in council meetings, I I really wanna avoid that. But what I'm saying is, we're gonna try this, see how it works, and I hope it works smoothly and effectively.
Well, before you say you try it, let's go on record as to who thinks this is a good idea, cuz it's not just you that makes this change. So if you three wanna actually say that, then go ahead and say on the record that we wanna limit speech.
What do we do?
No, but yeah, but we're giving direction off of consensus here.
Yeah, all right, okay, all in favor of the five minute limit, if you'd be, let it be known by the raised hand, all right, all opposed?
All in favor of letting people speak, thank you.
Okay, okay, let's move on, what what else do we have?
Okay, I, anybody have anything up to six point seven, that's my next one.
Uh, I got one, four point five.
Okay, and I have four point six.
Just kind of defining what an emergency measure is.
Yeah, I had the same one.
On uh, sorry, um, three, um, on one, it's like halfway through the paragraph, about no ordinance shall be passed until it has been read and voted upon at least two regular meetings, except an emergency measure.
Yeah, that's kinda defined by state law.
Right.
And usually it's like a, having to do with a natural disaster, and you gotta do something quicker or something of that nature. The county judge would have issued a uh state of emergency.
Okay, so it, uh, when you say it's defined by state law, does that mean that we are, we are prevented from passing an ordinance that we determined was an emergency measure, like we just wanted to get it done before next week? Is, does this allow us to do that? You know what I'm saying, you know what I'm asking?
I think.
Cuz I I don't, I wanna prevent us from being able to do that.
Okay, well, that's never come up since I've been here.
Yeah, I know, but I I.
And I don't think, I I mean, I would.
Can we just take it out?
Sure.
I mean, cuz state law will allow us to override it, if it's an emergency anyways, right?
But this is in the charter, so again, this would be something that the charter review committee would have to look at, make a recommendation, and you all can. But this is in the charter, so again, this would be something that the charter review committee would have to look at, make a recommendation, and you all can certainly, um, ask that.
But does it need to come out? I mean, if it's-
Okay, so, nothing needs to happen ever, but the-
Ms. Agner, what your question is?
I, I'm not sure I see the need for it. I mean, I think it, it says, excepted an emergency measure and, uh, if emergencies usually are going to be natural disasters, so, uh, I mean, I-
I guess there could be other-
Maybe emergency measured as defined by the state. I mean, we could also say, well, this is an emergency.
Person on the loose, or I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're kinda splitting hairs here with-
Usually what happens in my experience is, and I think if required, is the council declares it an emergency at that time. So you all vote and you declare the emergency. And it could be something as simple as, if we don't do this now, then we're gonna lose an opportunity to lock in our financing at this rate. Or if we don't do this now, we're gonna not be able to get the equipment here in time to, to do, uh, the water plant. Yeah, so those kinds of things, and y'all declare it an emergency whenever it's part of the whereas is in the ordinance. So it's part of the action that you're taking. And if you, you don't have to, and then, then it would require two votes. So it's one, it's an action you're actually taking. It's not something that we just, we just do.
Okay, so the, the reason to possibly take it out, the example of it, wasn't an ordinance, but it was something that was done at a special meeting that probably shouldn't have, was the K-Pub loan that we approved. The approval of that was done at a special meeting on a Friday. And so arguably, that wasn't an ordinance, but somebody could have an ordinance that you attempted to do that same sort of thing. And that's one reason to take it out. I'm not suggesting we take it out, but that's the, that's the reasoning behind the danger of it. So. If it's clarified as being, you know, state emergency stuff, then, you know, refer it to the state's rules.
But it can be more than that. So if it's more than that, are you, are we limiting ourselves if we put the words in as required by state or something?
Well, it's almost like if we're, if we're not gonna limit ourselves, then we might as well just take it out that it has to be read at a regular meeting. Just say it has to be read twice and just call it a day. I mean, that, it, you know.
Okay, does it, does it take away flexibility that you really need? I mean, if you, if, if we take it out, does it take away flexibility?
I, I would suggest just leave it alone.
Can we do it in two special meetings?
Until it comes up, no problem.
That's what I think.
If it's an emergency.
You can't get quorum, you know. You know, that's why the state has that measure in there, cause emergencies are by nature emergencies.
Emergency, yeah.
So, um, and I, I think if the council has, if you were to add, accept an emergent, add an emergency measure as declared by the council. So here we, here we are, just to say we're a first reading, the staff is saying, we, we gotta do this now, um, because of X, Y, and Z. You all make the decision whether or not that's, there's sufficient justification to make that happen. If you don't feel like there's some emergency, you don't declare it. And you say, no, there's gonna be two readings. But it's, it's one of those, you know, you don't know what's gonna come up in this case by case, but you all have the authority as per state law to declare that emergency.
Right, and we wouldn't do that with an ordinance though, would we? Would that be a resolution?
Yeah.
No, you might do, you might do an ordinance on first reading if the, if the, if a state of emergency's been declared and, and you might wanna put in some sort of, um, you know, immediate water rationing kind of measure or, um, price gouging.
But that would have to be an ordinance, it couldn't be a resolution?
Yeah, that'd be a law.
Well, what if we just add what, uh, what Mark suggested, uh, as determined by council? Does that?
Does that do it?
It's kind of inherent in there. I, I would, I would say, just leave it there and we'll cry about, cry foul if something comes up.
Okay, that's simpler.
That'd be, you know.
Alright.
And one more on four point five.
Vince, you alright with that?
That's fine with me. I just wanted, what, I just wanna know what we were defining it as.
Okay.
Uh, can we define consensus? I notice this come up before on council. I'd like to actually state what a consensus is, so there's no issue on, is it four, three, five? What is it? I'll say it's three.
I would say consensus, I would define consensus this way, as a majority. The difference between a vote and a consensus is that one is an official counting of something and the other is just making a statement. I'd say that's the only difference between the two.
Where, where are you talking about that?
Uh, at the bottom of four point five, that last paragraph.
Okay.
Oh, okay, well, yeah.
That, that doesn't need to be just, I mean, it's everywhere. I just wanted to define what actual consensus means.
So current, re- most, most recently consensus was defined as a hundred percent agreement. Cause consensus is usually a hybrid of-
Most recently here, or, okay.
Yeah, so, um, and it, you know, it's right out of Webster about what it, what a consensus means. But y'all have the authority to declare it differently, that it means something.
That might be kinda hard for, maybe a majority?
I, I think a majority should, it's, I, I feel a majority fits.
Yeah, I think that's better. Consensus can tie your hands.
So I would just say take it out. Officer or a majority of council. Just take out consensus or vote.
Well, I think what was suggested is, because it appears several places, there's something in here that-
Yeah, just the definition of what consensus means.
Definition of consensus is majority.
Yeah, and this one actually is defining consensus as a majority, cause it's saying a majority of council by consensus or vote. So whichever way you poll it, you're, you're taking a majority, which kinda gets to, I think, what I was saying, which is consensus is just an informal vote.
Sounds like there's an action word there, really.
Okay, are we, are we okay to, then, then, to replace consensus with majority? Is that good?
Define consensus as majority.
Okay. Okay. Alright, what else?
Well, four six. I just had a comment about a letter that was introduced. I think, George, you read it at one of our council meetings from Mr. Johnson. We didn't have a copy of it, so I didn't say anything at the time, but I thought maybe that's just something we wanna remember to do. And if you don't have a chance to copy it, maybe you, you don't read it until the next council meeting or you let them read it, um, when they can.
Okay, so I got that that day. And so, similar to kind of what you're working off of today, I haven't seen until you're talking about it. Sometimes, you know, the discussion that we have is spontaneous, so.
But you read a letter.
I read a letter that I received that day.
Couldn't be there.
Right.
I believe is what it was. Copy machine's right in there. Just make us a copy. We can all have a- Cause I was trying to follow what you were reading and it was a full page and I really would've just liked to have known exactly what the issue was.
I too would like to have. We have time before the meeting to make copies.
Right, so I, I will, I will do, I think the way it is, I think we put in here as a reasonable effort. I will do the best I can, but if there's repercussions for someone not doing it, I think that's silly to put in the rules. You can make a point and-
It's, it's a request.
It's a request.
That's all.
Okay, alright.
So that we all have the same information.
Right, so, you know, it goes both ways, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, what else? In ethics or procedures?
Can I bring one up, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So three point one, um, there's a statement in here, city manager must place a subject on the agenda if the subject is requested by the mayor or a council member, which I'm happy to do. But sometimes that's done on a Friday when the agenda's going out, the agenda's already done. It, it'd be nice if we at least had a timeframe that that needed to be done, um, just to manage things on our end.
Uh, what, what would you recommend by five o'clock Thursday before the council meeting?
Wednesday would be ideal.
Okay.
Isn't that kinda what we've been doing as common practice when we sit?
Usually it's Wednesday, yeah. But, but it hasn't always been Wednesday.
Okay, so, since we're gonna talk about it, just so we're clear, I haven't done that and been refused. So I asked on Wednesday, on the last one. So just so we're clear.
I don't think so, but-
Yeah, no, and I'll show you the email about it.
I don't think so.
How about a, alright, is there one in here for the public requesting to put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, on three point three, I think.
Is that gonna be the same, same date or is that gonna be earlier?
It's earlier.
Okay.
Okay, I, I forgot how we've used this wording elsewhere, but if we said, um, by Wednesday at five P M, the day before council. Would that do it?
The week before council, I think.
Huh?
The week before council.
Okay. Um. Alright, so how, how are we wording it?
By Wednesday at five P M, the week prior to the council.
Okay.
That'd go right after, uh, the word agenda there, right? Probably somewhere.
Now, what Mr. Vogel mentioned, where is that in regard to citizens, including agenda items? Do we need to say the same thing there?
No, they have a deadline of the Monday before.
Okay. Alright. Okay. Moving ahead, where is the next item?
Four point eight?
Point eight, yeah, but I thought it kinda says the same thing. He would add the limit. Five minutes.
I'm, I'm, I don't agree with putting a limit on it.
I know, I know you don't, but, um, we're gonna try it and hopefully it'll improve. Um-
Who's gonna time it and how are you gonna do the, the breaking up of the people's, you know, questioning?
We'll probably do the-
Cheryl, are you ready to do that? You're gonna have like five stopwatches going?
Well, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
No, you need five, cause I'm gonna ask a question, then it comes back to me. You'll have to time each one, right?
It may be staff, each a second.
But-
Isn't that nice? So I'll have like a sponsor staff member watching mine?
We're, we're just asking for-
I know what you're asking. You don't have to, I know, and that's what they put here. They put reasonable length.
Well, but reasonable sometimes for you is, is not my principle, that's right.
You want it to be your reasonable.
Let's, let's don't go back to that one, okay? Let's don't go back to that one, alright?
Yeah, so. Well, we're here.
Okay.
So logistically, how are we gonna time this?
So what I have seen done in the past is-
You mean other cities do this?
Oh, lots of cities do.
It's like the chess game clocks, we'll just tap it, I'm done talking.
Is that if you start the timer when they start speaking and then when they stop speaking? But that includes, some cities it includes Q and A from, if they wanna ask staff or somebody in the audience a question, that's part of their five minutes. Some cities they don't. So that would be helpful if y'all wanted to clarify that.
I think, I think would be good. And I'm not, I'm not joking, I am, I'm serious. If we just put a little clock, just like, have you seen the chess games where they, they tap the clock? We put a clock up in front of each of us on the dais so the public can see how long we got left. And we hit it when we're done with our question, so that they can see how much more I got. And, and then that would be a pretty good thing, right? We'd be watching our clocks, everybody would see it.
That's, that's, that's-
We'll be doing it on the screen.
That's possible, yeah.
Yeah, but I think the people in the audience would see it.
If it's on the screen, they will.
But running clock, yeah.
I would like, I would like, if we're gonna do that, one of those clo- uh, clocks that has some nice soft music. Okay, um, what's next?
I have five point three. Anyone have one?
Five two?
Five three.
Five three, okay.
Um, any person may speak only once on an agenda item. Do we have any, um, thoughts that there might be a reason for them to speak twice? And if so, are we, will allow them to do that?
You know, I've basically used discretion and had if folks are coming up there, I mean, if it seems reasonable and that kinda thing, uh, I've let that go.
Okay. Yeah, this is another place where we do it by consensus of council, which is somewhat important now, as far as, you know, cause, cause it normally gets used if someone asks for more time and consensus of council is to say yes or no. Um, this is where it really needs to be defined what that means, cause one guy may say, yes, let them have it, and the other say no, cause they're worried about the time, they gotta get home. And so, um, we are, well, we already got consensus being defined.
I have a thought that if someone were to speak and someone else comes to speak after them, and they feel like they need to make a correction or at least state their case after what the second person said, we should give them the opportunity to.
I think we have called them back up before.
Yeah, I think, I think we've done that. Um, so what I would say is I'm, I'm open to that if it, if it stays reasonable and civil-
Just take that sentence out.
And informs the situation.
Which one, the last one?
No, a person may speak only once on any agenda item. Just take it out, cause we're already limiting their time, period.
Okay, but here, here's the deal, here's the deal. I think you need, I think you need it in there if, if you need to really hold to that.
I think so too.
If you get somebody up there that is very emotional, they're almost getting abusive, whatever else, then I think, I think we need to have that option.
I think it's good to have it there and then discretion is used.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, yeah, what else do we have?
Uh, five four.
Uh-huh.
As far as slanderous remarks, uh, made by public. Can we add a council member instead of just a presiding officer? That can, uh, kinda stop that?
Yes.
Tell me, what are you, what are you doing again?
Oh, it's-
If someone were to come up and give, like, slanders, people on the council or just kinda do some things unnecessary, it says a presiding officer has the, uh, ability to limit them. Is there a way that we can allow anybody on council at least bring up the issue? I think it's been done before, but as far as the rules in here, it doesn't say that it can be, so.
What I would say is, if I'm, if I'm not calling somebody on this and George says to me, uh, Mr. Mayor, I think this is getting out of line, abusive, offensive, then I'm alright.
I think we should, it should be left with the presiding officer and do what you said. It would be our place to say something to you.
Yeah, if I haven't called it.
Yeah.
So what if, what if the presiding officer is the one making the slanderous remarks?
I would hope that we respect it, that, that we're not going to be doing that.
Well, cause the council meeting at Calu Theater, that occurred, yeah.
We're moving forward.
Yeah, well.
Um, okay, the, uh, alright, what else?
Well, I don't have anything until six point seven, but-
Oh, I got six point six.
Okay.
You both got six point seven?
I got six point six.
Oh, six point six, okay.
Uh, maybe allow a member from the public to request something out of order. An agenda item out of order. And we can say no.
I think you're old, need it up to things that you should do.
No, actually, um, so we, we have done it that, we have done that, but we didn't give them, what, what they do is they notify council and council does it. So, which still gets it covered under this. Um, we did it the other, well, he was doing it the other night. It was basically not as a request, I don't think, but anyways, um, so I think it gets covered.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, six seven.
Well, this just came to my mind after our last appointment to the recovery committee, um, and then what had occurred shortly thereafter, regarding the lawsuit. So if we don't have anything in our application process that says if your current litigation with the city, you need not apply at this time for our appointment to one of our openings. Seems obvious to me, but, uh, it's not in our applications now. So we did have, we now have the situation before us where we don't have any language to go back to to say, we're now engaged in a lawsuit with someone we just appointed to this recovery committee. So I, I just feel like we should have something that protects us or gives us an option to say, let's, let's, let's figure, let's settle the suit and you wanna come back later and apply or that's fine. But I don't think it's in our best interest to be, have someone on any of our boards who's suing the city. Just my personal opinion.
Okay, so that, that is, I think, most people's opinion that we would not want people on boards that are suing the city, or currently suing the city. But we already have the discretion to remove people off of boards or not appoint them if they're doing that. So I would say, I mean, in lawyer speak, the less law language that gets the job done is better, right? And so we, we already have, um, the ex- express authority to remove or deny appointment to anyone based on our consensus opinions, um, at that time. So I, I would say, you know, less is better in this case and, and leave the rule out, um, the explicit rule out.
But just as a point of interest as well, Mr. Hayes pointed this out to me. Had we wanted to, we could've taken that and took executive session to just determine if in fact-
Right.
-that was coming, which we didn't do, and it might've helped our voting that night. So just to keep that in mind, if we feel like it's a legal issue we wanna broach, we can take that into executive session.
Yeah, we always have that though.
Well, I didn't know that. So, uh, now I do and, uh, we should just keep that in our minds for the future. I don't, hopefully we won't have to use that very often, that's for sure. So you don't think any additional voting is needed?
I don't think it's necessary. I mean, we can, we, we can apply that, we can apply our- I don't think it's necessary, I mean, we can, we, we can apply that, we can apply our opinions to appointments and remove, removals of appointments all day long, already, without even giving a reason.
Well, you know, I'm just thinking of that particular person had seen that on the paper she filled out. She might would have thought, I don't know if I want to apply for this opening right now. Do you think I'm off on that?
Is, is...
I don't know that it would make a difference, we still would, we, we appoint or don't appoint based on our thoughts, right?
But I'm just saying she might not would have even submitted the application.
But it might also have been information that maybe somebody wouldn't have. But I...
But we're, yeah, but we're, what we're talking about in the application is prior to a lawsuit being filed. So, I don't think anybody's gonna write down, you know what, I'm about to sue ya, please do something for me. So, we're not gonna get a box check that's gonna help us there, so...
No, but if you said that we are, we won't accept, accept applications from anyone who is currently, she might have thought, well, I'm not currently, but I'm about to be, and I'm just saying it.
Yeah, I think it's just extra language that makes...
Whatever, 'cause now we're gonna have to go back and redo what we did, so...
Mr. Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Um, since you're dealing with the legal side of this, what, what's your recommendation?
Well, I think Councilmember Burden brings up the point, this is covered in, you all have another policy about board appointments. And frankly, if we were gonna, if you all wanted to better define that or, or address the, uh, litigation aspect, and, and that's the policy we would wanna go into and amend, I think. So, I, you know, you all absolutely have discretion on, on who to put on your boards, and you have a right to remove people from boards.
Yeah. How would we remove someone from a board?
You'd, you'd stick, we'd stick that item on the agenda.
Okay.
And we have to go through that process.
So, we just need to ask to have that done.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, if y'all don't wanna add anything, that's fine, it just was good for discussion, so...
Okay. Hey, let me ask you...
What number was that?
Six point...
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
And, and a verbal request for something on the agenda is okay, we can do verbal, just, that's fine. Through you, okay.
Hey, let me, let me go back to six two point two. Except in case of a tie vote, a motion to reconsider may be made, but only by a council member who was on the prevailing side in the original action. When would that, when would that motion be, uh, motion to reconsider be made? In the meeting itself?
Directly after the meeting.
Yeah. It's like later in the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, right, yeah, same meeting, okay. So, you've, you've gone, you voted, you're in that meeting, and somebody who is on the prevailing side says, I think we ought to reconsider that. And so, you vote on whether or not to reconsider. Right? Okay, okay, all right. Okay, what else do we have?
I kinda created one, it's not in here, it's something I keep, uh, talking about, board application process to give a public, it's kind of what I did on the application, is give a public notice, uh, no less than thirty days prior to the date of regular board appointments, and no less than fourteen days in the case of a vacancy. So that we are sure that we're letting, uh, the public know that we are accepting applications, we're not holding off till the week before or whatever the case.
Yeah.
So, are you suggesting a place to put that specifically?
I think, I guess, I'd made rule six point eight, board application process, but y'all can...
And again, you might wanna put that, my recommendation would be to put that in your board policies.
Could we do that in both places, this and, okay.
Okay, give it to me again.
Uh, it's on app, it's on all the applications we just changed, but I, the wording I have is, the city staff will ensure that a public notice will be announced to accept applications no less than thirty days prior to the date of a regular board appointment, and no less than fourteen days in the case of a vacancy.
Thirty days?
Thirty days.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's what I have, y'all fill thirty days is okay, I just, I think that's enough time.
Yeah. Everybody all right on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. Okay.
It's on all the application process.
On section seven miscellaneous?
He can change it if I didn't have it.
I have seven, seven point one.
You don't have two, three, four, or five?
I do have two, three, four, five.
Six.
What's your number, Bill?
So, he's, it's just the title of the section.
Yeah, it's just, uh...
Oh, I thought I had miscellaneous.
Section seven miscellaneous?
I don't know why I don't have it, but anyway.
Voting required, point of order.
Did, did you mention six point eight on that last one?
Yeah, I, that's one I created, it's not, it doesn't exist, right.
Oh, you created, that's, okay, I was gonna say, 'cause I don't have, okay.
Okay, I've got, I've got a question on point of order seven two. A point of order may be made at any moment during a meeting, and it may inter, interrupt pending discussion, takes precedent over that discussion or any other motion, and must be decided before any other discussion or action occurs. So, if a council member says, Mayor, I've got a point of order. You stop, they present it, and then the mayor rules yes or no that that's valid. Um, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, and the individual making the point of order can dispute, and then, presiding officer either accepts or not accepts, okay. Right, okay.
But you gotta go study Roberts' Rules of Order and know which ones are points of order, you can't just yell out point of order to stop discussion, right?
Right.
We're not under Roberts' rules.
I know we are, so we don't really have point of order.
No, we do, I mean, you all have adopted this in here.
Right, no, no, I know what I'm saying, these are the only points of order there are, that's what I'm saying.
Right, yeah, this captures...
Yeah, this is it.
And defines point of order.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else?
Not for me.
Okay. Now, we'll move to what?
Ethics?
Move to the ethics?
Does anybody have any issues with the ethics policy? I didn't have any.
Well, yes. I just think that when we're in the public, no matter we're five people, ten people, or fifty people, what we say and do, we should be careful that it's not harmful or divisive, and always in the best interest of the city. And I think I've seen some questionable things happen, which is why I went to this particular part and highlighted it. So, I don't wanna change anything, I'm just saying it's in there, so we need to attempt at least to...
So, why don't you, please, uh, expound on that a little bit?
Well, I think the June eleventh meeting was what kicked this all off for me.
Right.
And of course, I wasn't there, so I don't know exactly what was said, but I...
So, isn't that divisive in itself?
What?
Saying that something was divisive not being there, and you didn't even hear it?
Well, actually, I did hear it, but, um, I heard from people some of the things that were said.
Right.
And I think they were divisive, I think they could have been harmful. They weren't as productive as last night's meeting, I'll put it that way, so...
Okay, but see, that's, that, that, that's kind of the thing, so what you're really talking about is divisive to you. And so, that's the problem with getting this, into this, 'cause you, you sat up there and said you didn't have a problem with the town hall meeting, you had a problem with the content. And the issue ends up being, what right do any of us have to, to talk about that? If the truth is being said, then, and if it isn't being said, that's the only choice you have. And I challenge you to tell anything that was said at that particular meeting that wasn't true.
Well, let me ask you a question, was race brought up in your meeting?
I didn't bring it up, but I'm sure it was brought up.
I guess what I'm saying is, is you're the council member...
Are you telling me that there is no issue of race in this country, and there never has been?
No, no.
Okay, so then there wasn't anything untruthful said. I, I gave factual information, so if you've heard the meeting, what facts were false? If they were false, then there's a problem. If they were true, then, you know, basically that's just speech. And civil disobedience is a form of democracy, it's a part of democracy. So, one ver, one person's version of, uh, divisiveness is another civil disobedience. So, if you're, you're kind of walking a fine line there.
Well, it's in our ethics already.
I know that, I, I understand that, so, but you're highlighting it...
So, I must have gotten there from some, for some reason.
I know, but you're highlighting it because you're, you're trying to call out a particular instance.
Let me tell you, if that meeting hadn't happened, I wouldn't have it highlighted. So, all I'm saying is...
So, I'm asking you, what was divisive at that, what, what was untruthful at that meeting?
It's not about untruthful, you're a council member, you're a council member, you represent the city. When you go...
I represent the people.
And the city.
No.
We're all in, we're, the people and the city.
No, I represent the citizens.
What's the best interest of the city, is what I'm saying.
The citizens.
And that's what it says right here.
Yes, I understand that, but divisiveness is, if I'm telling something truthful, how can it be divisive? If I tell something that the city government has done that you, you don't like, then I'm not a team player on the city government, but I'm not supposed to be. I'm a team player for the citizens. If the government and the citizens are together, then I'm on the same team. But I am not gonna choose between those, so if I'm telling truth to the people, then you shouldn't have a problem with that.
I guess as long as your facts are as accurate as they can possibly be.
I'm asking you, you, you've heard the meeting, so what was, what was false?
I've heard parts of it, but I haven't heard the whole thing, and I wasn't there.
Okay, but you've heard it, so you're making the claim that it was divisive. It's only divisive if it's false.
You know, I'm actually just pointing out what our ethics already says.
I understand that, but you're pointing it out because you just told me, you highlighted it because of a particular meeting. So, I'm asking you, what was divisive and untruthful at that meeting?
Well, I think some of the things you left out about the twenty fifty plan would be one thing to start with.
But that's not something I said, so what about what I said was divisive or untruthful?
We were about to vote on that the very next evening. So, I would have thought that you would have wanted to bring the, the whole picture of the twenty fifty plan to the public, to the citizens.
We've been doing that already.
But in this particular case, what was reason for the meeting then?
So, what was untruthful or divisive? To, no, but, the, the meet, the purpose of the meeting was to inform the public about portions, very small portion of the plan. Because that, that, that portion was, uh, stood on its own. It wasn't actually intertwined in the whole thing, and it was a particular issue that we all know what it was. And so, it still gets back to, what about what I said was untruthful?
Like I said, I think it's more what you didn't say.
I know, but what, that's not, you can't say uns... Non-speech isn't divisive.
Well...
George, I mean, we could go back and dissect that.
No, we're, we're not, we're not gonna dissect it, she's making a claim that needs to be addressed, it's...
No, I'm, I didn't say I was making a claim.
Sure you are. You said you highlighted it because of that meeting. So, what in that meeting was unethical?
Okay.
Mr. Brody.
Hey, we, we've gone back and forth on that, it, it, this is not productive.
It makes you uncomfortable, but you know what? I'm being attacked integrity-wise as being unethical. So, you're gonna say move on, I'm saying, don't, don't drop a bomb and then run away and say you didn't do it. So, I, it's being claimed that this particular meeting was unethical, because she's highlighted this particular part. So, I'm asking, what part of it did violate it?
I can say to you all day, we could go back and forth on that and, and dissect that, uh...
We don't have to, she's making the claim, make her defend it.
We're, 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 we're not gonna do it, we're not gonna do it.
It wasn't intended to do that. Uh, you know.
Okay, now...
If you need to, that's...
Let me ask you...
What was it intended to do?
Just, hey, state, what's the, okay, let me ask you, at the end of the ethical issues or the statement of commitment, do we have anything there that needs to be added or revised?
No, we just heard while we were here.
You mean on the hard ac, ethics?
Well, no, I'm, I'm looking at the sta, statement of commitment there at the end. Anything there that needs to be revised or added?
No, but I guess I'd like to make a reminder, since we're just doing reminders. In there, it talks about being able to, uh, follow the procedural rules and the state laws and the things of that, just as a reminder. Our actions, and you might wanna think about that as you sign documents when you take office. But there's documents that you sign that actually are, if they're false statements being made, and they're, they're unethical, 'cause they don't follow the rules. We broke procedural rules. Um, I didn't, but y'all broke procedural rules, speaking at that P and Z meeting, just as a reminder, that's unethical by our own ethical rules.
Right, yeah, and, and, and you were right about that, and I apologize in regard to that, speaking up for the twenty fifty at the P and Z. I, I, I know now not to speak to boards and commissions and that kind of thing, so...
And I do apologize, I have apologized.
Okay, well, there's al... Okay, well, there's also, there's also the ethical rule in there about, I've forgotten which one it is, about speaking about motivations of council members or the public, which you all three have done, um, against the ethics violate, uh, the rules that we have adopted, already adopted. So, just a reminder, stop questioning the motives behind the thought. Which is what, the one that's popping in my head is Ms. Eichner at the, uh, uh, Calu meeting, saying it was the most manipu, the, the utmost in manipulation to have held a town hall meeting. And she apologized on my behalf.
Yeah.
Which is questioning the motives of council. If you're gonna question the motives, then at least question the content before you get to the motives.
Okay, do you have a whole list of grievances?
No, those aren't grievances, they're just reminders, remember, we're not, we're not calling anything.
But we're going to cover this in the future, because we're not going to have any more meetings like that. They will be posted, anyone can be there, all of that, it's, it's gone away, it's over, and it's done with. And so, as we move on into the future here, our meetings will be posted, we can be there, we will know what is said, how it is said,
You can dismiss unethical behavior if you like, but it isn't just moving forward. Just saying, just saying this will never happen again is inaccurate, because the meeting that happened had nothing, the reason you guys had problems with it had nothing to do with it being posted. That's a disingenuous statement, you had problems, she's told us already, it wasn't the meeting itself, it was the content of the meeting.
Okay, wait, 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 hey, wait. Um, these kind of accusations don't help and don't clear the air. If you wanna talk one-on-one with somebody in regard to an issue, then do that.
No, I'm sorry, sir, th, but this is an ethics discussion, this is how we do it.
Okay, so you got some more?
No, but, no, but you're, you're doing the same thing you did at the meeting that she brought this up in the first place. You're, you're letting someone levy accusations, and then you're cutting it off before those accusations are addressed. If you don't want to, that's fine, we don't have to, but that's a ridiculous way to handle ethics.
Yeah, okay. Anything else that we need to do before we leave?
Mr. Mayor, are you gonna allow any comments from the public at all, or it's up to you?
Um...
It's just...
Normally, we don't allow public comments.
Not for work sessions.
Okay. Okay, uh... Do we, uh... I would say then, we will close our meeting and be through at eleven twenty seven, eleven twenty eight.